We are live.
Okay. Uh, so good evening, everyone. Uh, I am Voltech. And Chair of the zoning Board of Uh, and I would like to call the meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format and is being recorded. Uh, it is August twenty sixth past the hour of seven P M. Uh, since every all the members here are present, we don't need to roll call any members uh in hybrid. Uh, so before we begin tonight, um, I'd like to welcome uh Jacob Harvey. Uh, Jack was recently uh most recent A alternate for the zoning board appeals and was voted to be a full member by the Selecting Board. Tell me so. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you.
All right. So first up on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the petition submitted by D J F Realty LLC for a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section seven oh eight oh two oh end site plan approval pursuant to zoning bylaw section seven oh three oh five oh A one B to alter lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use and also to modify an existing special permit for groundwater protection overlay district issued by the zoning board appeals on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And filed with the town clerk on December first, twenty twenty three pursuant to section seven oh seven oh one O. The applicant proposed to construct three single-family homes on the property located at one twenty Maple Street. Um, map fifty-two parcel seventeen twenty-eight, twenty-nine residential C zoning district and groundwater protection overlay. Uh, district area two. This matter comes for the board and reports a joint motion for remand filed with Superior Court dated June seventeen, twenty twenty-five in the case of G J F Realty LLC and Northboro Zoning Board Appeals Case Number two, three, eight, five, C B oh, one, three, seven, seven, which concerns the plaintiff's appeal decision of the board filed with the town clerk on December first, twenty twenty-three, which denied their special permanent site plan approval application for construction of a five-unit multi-family structure on the subject property. So just to kind of recap, um, how we got here today. Uh, so September twenty twenty-one, uh, there was a fire which resulted in a total destruction of a building around twenty-nine Maple. Uh, it was a tragic fire in which one person uh died from it. In twenty twenty-three, uh, a special permit was uh applied for uh for a to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use for five units, uh, each with one bedroom. Uh, the decision to deny the special permit uh was in the fall of twenty twenty-three for both the special permit and site plan. And was appealed uh subsequently thereafter. Uh, in the time between the appeal was filed, uh, there was a negotiation between the applicant's counsel and our own town council, uh, Jonathan Knightman was on the meeting. And a remand decision was filed in June of twenty twenty-five. So a remand decision is essentially an agreement to sort of go back to the drawing board. Um, in which nothing had really been agreed to by the board or the applicant and a new special permit uh has been filed subsequent to the remand decision. So that brings us to where we are today. So for the board, um, you essentially have three items in front of us. We have a special permit um for a alter of a pre-existing non-conforming use. We had a site plan review uh for the proposed construction of three single-family homes. And we had a modification for the groundwater uh decision which was filed in twenty twenty-two. So that is what is forward today. Uh, so I figured I thought we can get it kicked off. So yeah, I've been uh representing them. I want to start with the special permit side of things and just kind of give us a wave of land and what exactly you guys are looking for. I think that would be great.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, my name is Jonathan Sufferstein. Uh, I'm counsel for the applicant. Uh, and as you indicated, um, this matter is before the board on a remand uh by agreement of the parties. Um, when uh in order to protect uh the applicant's rights, we filed the appeal with Superior Court. Uh, and Mr. Ickman and I, um, over the past number of months had had conversations about whether there's uh an application or a development that might be more palatable to the board uh than what was originally approved and uh denied rather and and rather than spending years and thousands of dollars more in litigation uh coming up with something that hopefully the board would be more comfortable with uh and bringing it back for public hearing. So uh we believe that's that's what you have in front of you now. You may recall that the original proposal was to demolish the existing multi-family five-unit building and uh replace it with another five-unit um development in a single uh structure. Um, as uh we discussed this and and consider uh comments from the board, comments from neighbors. Um, my client thought that maybe something that looked more like um the surrounding neighborhood uh being three single-family residences instead of a single five-unit multi-family building would be more palatable to both the board and and more acceptable to the neighbors. And that's the uh the application we have in front of you. Although it's three single-family homes proposed on a on one lot. You wouldn't know that driving past the property because it's three small or, you know, relatively modest, single-family homes, each of which will have its own driveway leading onto a different street. There's a a property that has frontage on three different roads. Uh, and so the three single-family homes will look like they're on their own lots. No one driving by would look at it and say that's a multi-family property. Um, one of the uh single-family homes will have one bedroom. The other two will each have two bedrooms, uh, and then they'll have uh garages and um basements and obviously uh the other traditional amenities and uh facets of a single-family home. But again, uh, as you drive by, it's just going to look like more single-family homes in a single-family neighborhood. Uh, so that's the overview. Obviously, we can answer any specific questions the board might have. Uh, the standard, as you probably know, is when you have a pre-existing non-conforming use and the applicant is proposing to alter the pre-existing non-conforming use. The question is whether it's going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before. And we think it's just the opposite. We think this is going to be much more in keeping with the character and nature of neighborhoods and it's going to be um something that'll fit in much better and be less detrimental than what was there before.
Okay. Uh, I guess could you start just giving it, just give us maybe a a high-low overview on sort of the the buildings that are going to be um replacing the structure that's currently there? Sorry, I was sort of in just kind of, you know, I mean, I obviously the board has seen this, um, but I think that there are probably members of the public who go online that probably have not really seen this. So just sort of the general view size, how it's simply sort of located, um, street faces, that's all good.
Right. So uh you see the uh front elevation, typical uh of what someone would see driving past it. Again, a a relatively modest, single-family house with um a two-car garage. Uh, each of these uh houses will have its own driveway, its own uh yard space and um they're traditional colonials uh in architectural style in terms of the size. Uh, one of the um, the one-bedroom unit is going to have seventeen hundred and ninety square feet. Um, and then uh the other two units will each have twenty-one fifty. Uh, they'll have basements, but they'll be on unfinished basements. Um, and uh the um configuration is that uh each is going to add, as I mentioned, its own curb uh onto uh one of the three streets, um Omaha, Maple and Johnson. Uh, and there'll be landscaping in between to sort of differentiate with three uh three homes.
Okay. Uh, and so I guess like what is the once the buildings are, houses are built, is the plan to rent them or sell them?
I believe the plan is to rent them, to hold and to rent them. Um, okay. Um, and I guess I want to just mention, I think much of what I've been seeing as a land use lawyer recently is large homes, McMansions on single-family lots or garden-style multi-family apartments. I think something that really isn't being built much is is this type of product. A smaller home that maybe a family's starting out can't afford to buy yet, but it's it's a real home as opposed to having to move into an apartment. So I think this is that's another advantage of of this project is that it's really providing uh a type of housing that I don't think you're seeing built a lot these days.
Okay. Uh, and I believe the the plan does call for uh all three houses to share one septic system.
That's correct. And the septic plan is that is.
Okay. Um, before we get into sort of the the site plan criteria, um, Lori, your, um, do you guys have any comments with regards to sort of the the special permit aspect of this? Well, I assume this will be classified as a continuing to be a multi-family. Three, three unit?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, uh, I guess I'll open it up to the board at this time. Um, if anyone has specific questions with regards to the special permit that I think, at least for me, you know, I'll have additional questions with with regards to the site plan. And I think Lori has some comments that we can get into at that time. Um, but I kind of want to focus on the special permit aspect piece of this. That's so, um, any other board members? Uh, Jack.
Sure. Which uh unit is going to be the smallest?
Would be the unit on Omaha.
The one on Omaha.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
To you.
Um, just for, I know we've asked, we've asked the discussions, but just for um the crowd. Um, which, so we know, so we just had said that the the one bedroom's going to be seventeen ninety, the two, two bedrooms will be twenty-one fifty each. So that's a total of um, six thousand fifty total. And what was the size of the original building that's standing right now? All the selling spaces of that?
Actual uh square footage
Yeah.
of the area was existing was just under four thousand square feet.
And I know, and I apologize because I know we've been on for this before, but we always kind of go back.
And that was in that existing dwelling right now, that was currently the finished space that was in that unit.
Yeah.
There was probably about another seven or eight hundred square feet in that unit that could, if I did rebuild that building, could be utilized to rebuild. They don't have anything if you're going to see the special permit?
I I have one more question about the subject and that's going to be a brand new subject. That was, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
So so the subject that's there currently is a five-bedroom septic that did pass the Title V. Unfortunately, it's not in the correct location for this concept to work. So there will be a brand new subject installed.
For two M U
Yeah.
to ask for the, or
John. Uh, is there any expected alteration to the number of bedrooms here? Uh, we're actually taking it back a step back. Say, is there any provisions in the lease that would limit the amount of tenants that could live in either the one bedrooms that's eight, eighteen hundred square feet or the two bedrooms that are twenty-five hundred square feet?
Yeah, so all my leases are drawn up that says a specific address with uh, you know, a specific amount of tenants and and specific bedrooms and bathrooms. Um, so it will be specified in that lease. Um, I know that was a concern before that, you know, had been brought up and actually on on a previous project before you involved, John.
Yeah.
There was a uh discrepancy on on tenants on another building that I own. And actually, Bob and I had met there and walked through it. Um, just to clarify, you know, the layouts and stuff and and um the tenants were exactly matched up to exactly how my leases were. And Bob had verified that in a separate meeting on a on a different um occasion.
And I do want to ma- mention that a previous iteration of these plans had a bonus room wouldn't qualify as a bedroom, but I know there have been concerns about that. So those bonus rooms were eliminated from the plans as
Thanks.
Um, are there any other questions with regards to the special? Or do you have anything?
Uh, well, of course, I I supplied you with my comment here. So I had eleven comments. Um, the the comment that I was most concerned with is the uh, are are you planning on doing any sort of stormwater mitigation on the site? Uh, because you are increasing the amount of impervious surface shown.
Um, yeah, I had a quick memo from my engineer from McCarthy Associates um on that.
While he looks, but then I also, I just want to note that like, again, this is three single-family homes with driveways directly onto the street. Yes, we're increasing impervious. We're not disturbing an acre of land. The entire site is only four thousand square feet above an acre. Clearly, you're not going to disturb ninety-plus percent of the site. Um, I understand the planning board's regulations return incorporated into this process because you're acting as site plan review authority. Uh, do require at least that issue to be addressed. We're hoping that the board is comfortable. We already we're we're revising the stormwater permit. We're clearly not going to be adversely affecting the stormwater. You know, we're three separate frontages. I mean, it really looks like just single-family homes and our hope is that we're not required to um do costly stormwater mitigation again and recognizing the fact that we're building three separate homes with three separate driveways to try to address concerns about the project we actually wanted to build originally, which would have been less costly because it's a single building with a single driveway, a single parking area. So we our our hope would be that we don't sort of get hit at both ends, having to do a costlier development and at the same time, as a result of that, be forced to uh to do costly on the site. Stormwater mitigation when for all intents and purposes, it would just be a few smalls.
So I've got a comment um from my engineer stating that stormwater management stand of standards shall not apply to multi-family housing developments and redevelopment projects with four or fewer fewer units. I see you looking at your handbook. Uh, Lori, that's in section uh two dash sixty dash zero thirty A. Um, so it's obviously open for discussion, but you know, the engineers are stating that uh, you know, stormwater uh says this is going to be three separate um single-family houses that we went from needing stormwater to now not needing stormwater uh by the new description of the layout.
And I do want to acknowledge that the planning board's regulations do say that we're supposed to provide a stormwater analysis, even if, for example, under E P rules. Don't really get that, but again, our hope is that obviously, to the extent the board views that as potentially applicable, that since we're we really feel we've come a long way to try and meet the board's concerns that way and that we don't sort of, that it doesn't end up being, you know, a done punished situation.
Um, my my comment mostly had to do with the fact that this is a special permit in the groundwater protection overlay area two, which requires um if if you're exceeding the uh percentage of impervious area by fifteen percent or more, then you need to essentially infiltrate your stormwater. So a lot of folks do that with the roof roof runoff.
Yeah, it's
And the
that was something commented right here. At the very least, we could look at, you know, adding roof runoff, dry walls and provide them something as needed, whatever they would like. So we'll we'll want to work with whatever whatever is needed.
Oh, you have a second condition?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
So maybe you we would accept a condition that roof runoff be run and captured and run into dry walls.
Right.
Good, Jim.
Uh, yeah, Jim.
So do we have numbers for the amount of impervious surface prior? And what is proposed?
I've got percentages that would help you. So yeah, for example, um existing lot coverage of the original plan was thirteen point four percent. And with the new proposed plan, now that I have combined it three lots, uh, actually, the uh coverage goes down. It goes to nine point seven percent, which is a a decrease of three point seven percent in overall overall lot coverage.
And that actually includes your driveways?
Um, that only included building to building. We didn't include drive, existing driveways or new driveways. So that was only building purposes.
What where do you even get those numbers?
Uh, I can get those. It'll probably the it'll probably go down even more. There's a fairly large driveway there now. Plus, there's another driveway in there. Parking area on the side. So that number would probably uh, you know, it would probably go down to like seven and a half percent. And then that would increase to five, you know, from three and a half percent to probably five and a half percent. So if I count the driveways, it the impervious is 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 working in my favor.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, just to provide a point of clarification.
Uh, true.
Um, when we calculate increase to impervious surface, it typically fifteen percent is the trick. And what we do is we look at the current parcel in its current configuration of all impervious surfaces. Okay, is that structure and those pieces are still there? That's currently what you have from pervious surface. If you increase that number by more than fifteen percent, just fifteen percent over existing conditions, then you need to do a recharge system.
Okay, so I'm decreasing mine then. So it doesn't apply to that.
Now, there's a fifteen percent increase worksheet that we have online. I can get it to you if you'd like. Um, if you want, feel free to um that it's decision, whatever. Um, but it's typically something that's worked out with the uh engineering department, you know, for approvals and specifications in terms of which we are even be planning to to infiltrate, right, if it's
Yeah.
to the soil.
So I, yeah, so I think what I would say is I think it's just a good idea to, whatever the numbers are.
Yeah.
Uh, based on, I know that the lot was three certain lots. Whatever the current lot is, take the current, whatever the current impervious surface is there, divide and divide and current size of the lot, tell us what that was, what's in the lot.
Okay.
If there's conditions or if you guys don't want to do it, then your question, we can, we can. Yeah, my whole point being was the the lot coverage is is a less percentage now than it was before. Yeah. Yeah, so whatever it is, just as long as we have that. Um, yeah. So then I guess uh just kind of going off of Lori's sort of comment sheet, this is probably more towards sort of the site stuff, um, you know, um, you know, I guess, is there anything that is of any of these notes here that are of concern to you?
No, I'd be happy. I I've gone through it and sort of made notes to myself. It would be helpful. I'm happy to just run through one by one.
Sure. Yeah, I think that was helpful.
Great. Um, so the first one um is really the level of detail on the locusts plan and asking where the uh the locate the existing water main on the abiding roadways on the plan. We'd certainly be happy to do that as a sort of requirement for a final plan. Uh, I think that could be a possible condition. We'd be happy to accept that. Obviously, it's a problem.
Right.
Um, similarly, uh, Lori asked to update the zoning table to note that we're in the groundwater protection overlay district, which has a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet, the existing don't. The zoning table we have on there notes the base zoning with the twenty thousand square foot zone for the lot. Obviously, we're not changing the the lot other than merging them and it's well, it's fifty, thirty thousand, I think. So um, we satisfied that. We're happy to add that on for the zoning table at you know, just to clarify. Um, the third one, um, she asked for the note to be um revised um to indicate that it's a oh, actually, I think we've already addressed that with the submission of a revised existing conditions plan. So we've already done that one. So I think that's been resolved. Um, the third one uh is um that the re- planning board regulations would require site triangles coming out of the driveways. Um, again, these are small single-family homes on roads that aren't particularly dangerous um and are in good shape. Uh, to the extent that's deemed to apply, we would ask for it to be waived. And I can certainly supplement there with a waiver request. I mean, if we had to get somebody to come out and measure site distances coming out of that practice, we could, but I hopefully everyone sees that it's not, not going to be a safety issue. Um, the bit uh comment, I think we've touched on um with the stormwater requirements. We'd really like not to have to do expensive drainage calculations. We'll do the worksheet. We'll demonstrate that we're not increasing impervious surface by fifteen percent. Um, and again, we'll uh ask for uh, that we'll accept a condition to have roof runoff collected and um directed into dry walls. Um, the sixth comment was uh ask for revision to the erosion control plan. Again, we're happy to do that in the final plan set uh and note that I think there was also a comment in the um conservation agents of comments, which I just got. Um, but I think there was something about erosion control on there, asking for a deeper um saying. But we're we're happy to do that. You know, we would accept that and and revise the note accordingly. Comment seven, um, notes that there's a requirement for development impact analysis, which would include traffic study and economic impact and impact to schools and things like that. It's absolutely in the regulations. And again, we would ask that that be waived for really we're replacing five bedrooms with five bedrooms and just, you know, really making it nice for so hopefully, we don't think we're going to have any increased impact on on the town and the neighborhood or infrastructure. So we we were asking not to have to do a development impact study. Um, as to comment eight, uh, it relates to lighting. Will certainly, we're not going to have any poles. Um, we're going to have typical lighting for single-family homes. Um, we'll accept a condition that all the lighting be dark sky compliant. And then are you planning to have a a post at the driveway?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that will look nice and it would match the neighborhood. Most of them have posts.
Oh, certainly will make it all dark sky compliant and submit the
Of course, yeah.
light fixtures, um, higher insulation. Um, Let's see, uh, nine, uh. Makes sense, uh, she suggested having walkways, um, to the front doors from the street, I assume. Um, or from the driveways, whichever you choose on on the final plan set, so we'll. Certainly do that, um, makes a lot of sense. Uh. Ten, we touched on, um. We will submit evidence that we're not gonna disturb. More than the earth land, um. And, uh, eleven. Uh, is a recommended condition regarding homeowners association. Uh, we would certainly accept this as a. Condition in the event that the units were ever found to lies and sold. Individually, um, the intent, as we mentioned earlier, is that this is gonna remain as. Uh, under the applicant's ownership and as rental housing. Uh, and he would certainly be required to take care of all the things that are mentioned in this note, but. Certainly a condition that in the event they're ever sold as individual units, we would first form an association that. Did all the things required here. So that is acceptable, um. And then, I think I covered everything in there, I'll take applause if anyone has questions, comments, um.
So I I think, and I probably should mention this earlier, so like. There is a lot of sort of moving parts with this case, um, I don't think we will have. A final decision tonight in terms of closing the public hearing. Or, you know, discussing as a board, I think we sort of need to get our ducks in row in terms of. Making sure that we're voting for the right waivers and making sure the conditions are spelled out to. Your satisfaction, so I don't think we get a sort of final stamp decision, but. I do think, um. What I would like to have is sort of directionally where we're headed, um, so that. Regardless of which way we are going, you at least have a good sense of that. So that there's no surprise to that, okay? Um, so I hope that that is acceptable, but in terms of the site plan review. Does anyone have any official question? At this time? So I think I think for myself, um, you know, one of the questions I have. With regards to Maple Street, you know, Maple Street is is a somewhat busy road, um, so this shows sort of some of the. Trees and stuff, I guess, could you kind of just? So Maple Street is a road that does have a lot of cars, there is an elementary school on the on the street, um. People bought school, it's sort of a connector between the high school and Peaslee Elementary School. Um, I guess, could you kind of just give sort of a lay of the land in terms of what your escape plans are along Maple Street?
I mean, I don't wanna dive, you know, too much, you know, into it, uh, but the general neighborhood setting i- is there's not. You know, a ton of landscaping along Maple, uh, street. Um, you know, I'd like to add some color, um, I'd like to add some greenery, give a little bit of privacy. Um, you know, I think that that would be, uh, somewhat acceptable, there is some arborvitae across the street. Maybe match some arborvitae with some stuff that, you know, flowers in the spring and the fall, um, but. I mean, the landscaping is also, you know, up for discussion too, I mean, if if we if we wanna, uh, you know, go up with actual trees that we can, but, you know, I wanna. Work with, uh, you know, whatever's needed for landscaping, um, I've got a good company in town that I can use, so, um, you know, whatever's needed.
And and the other point I wanted to make. In terms of Maple Street. The existing condition is that there are two separate curb cuts, two separate driveways onto the property from Maple Street leading to. Five units, whereas now that's gonna be reduced to a single. Driveway from one unit onto Maple Street, so, you know, that busy or thoroughfare is actually seeing a reduction in. Direct, you know, trips on or people driving onto or adding access to driveway traffic.
Okay, um, Jim. Yeah, there's sidewalks along any of the primary.
So that's a great question that you asked me, um, so the, um. The select board, I actually talked to Scott from the DPW, I I've got an email from him here. And, uh, the select board had appropriated funds to survey, design, permit, view sidewalks along Maple Street. Um, I'm not exactly sure when that project is being, uh, put into place, uh, but there will be sidewalks that are going to be implemented in Maple Street. Um, fortunately, they're across the street, they're not on my side of Maple, but it looks like they're gonna be, uh, implementing a sidewalk, uh. Throughout the, uh, the entire street, um, at some point, he didn't give me a a time and a date, but that product is currently in the works.
Good, thanks, but currently, there's there's no sidewalk.
Currently, there's nothing on Maple, uh. There's sidewalks on Maple Street on the, um, Peaslee School side. Headed towards like on where this project is, there's nothing.
And also on not on Johnson or Alon.
Uh, no, there's not. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm right there, are. No, the sidewalk ends at on Maple, what ends at, uh, Ridge, that's where it ends.
Uh, Susan.
So could we just make sure that the Maple driveway has like sufficient triangles since we know that there's gonna be a sidewalk across the street? That's the one? Just make sure that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I understand about the other two driveways, so.
Yeah.
So we'll just, we'll make sure there's a landscape, any specs, there's anything that. Get in any way.
There's teen drivers that are gonna be.
Absolutely, I understand.
So this, uh, proposal shows the trees set back from the roadway, uh, so I I I still want the trees. Again, I would recommend that to plant the trees because they shouldn't interfere with the site distance. Since they're not, uh, you can see that the driveway extend beyond there.
Yeah, whatever you have for for.
Uh, so I think it's probably a good time, um. So this is a public hearing, um, for those who are in, uh, the audience that would like to make a comment. Um, and those who are joining us via, uh, Zoom. Um, so I think if you're on Zoom, if you wanna just raise your hand. So we'll call on each individual, um, you know, we'll allow people to talk for as much as they want. At least that's my preference, um, if you could just please state your name and your address. Um, before you speak for, uh, notating purposes, would be appreciated. So.
Douglas Stone.
Douglas Stone, okay, so I guess we can start with the hybrid, so.
Oh, can you hear me?
Hi, Douglas, yeah, if you could just please state your name and address.
Hmm, uh, yes, I'm Douglas Stone, um. Thirty-three Birdkill Road, North Row. Uh, let's see. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you, Doug.
Okay, um, okay, so this is. Going to be just remain a single, a single lot, right? You're not subdividing the lot.
The the lot will be one single lot, uh, three single family homes.
Yeah. And what's the septic design rated for?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the septic bedroom, the septic is designed for five bedrooms.
Okay, so that should be stipulated then.
Yep.
And I just another question, I'm not sure it's really important, but. Uh, for the building inspector, how? How does the frontage rule work on a corner lot?
Typically on a corner lot, cause you've got two corners, it's thirty feet, thirty feet, thirty feet. For the setbacks.
And I'll.
No, I mean.
I think dimensionally, there are no issues with this lot for the buildings. So.
No, I mean, how, how much qualifying road frontage do you have?
Uh, it was a hundred feet, it's actually it's off, we only use a hundred feet and I believe they have all three rows.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Um, so. Yeah, so you couldn't count, like, for instance, if you had. Fifty feet on each road, you couldn't count that as a hundred, right?
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, okay, that's all I have then, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Douglas. Uh, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, um, if you could just please raise your hand and just kind of state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm just there, I live at one twenty-two Maple Street.
Okay.
My biggest concern right now is that, uh, the current mess that's across the street from my house. Is devaluing my house, and I'm wanting to know when it's just gonna be taken down. Cause it's kind of dangerous, a lot of the stuff that was boarded up and all over went all over the neighborhood. And my other concern is this. I spoke to the engineer several times, and he told me that it's not slated to have a sidewalk for at least five years. Cause they don't have the money. To do it. They were gonna do more stuff in the center of town, and they just didn't have the money to continue the sidewalk. And it's very dangerous, it's a very well-traveled street, people drive way too fast. And we've asked the police to sit in a driveway many times because kids run the street from from Algonquin. They go to Ridge Road, they go down, go onto Lyman, and then back up Bartlett Street, and that's, it's just very, they, we still have trailer trucks come down. So, you know, it that's kind of concerning to me, but also, we know that the septic that was there failed a couple of times. And the the owner that that owned the property previously, he was pumping that septic constantly. And they, they didn't have, they only had the last tenant on the first floor, had two young children, but prior to that. There was just single families. No children. So I think it's quite an impact for the neighborhood, I don't like the idea of rental property. I own my home and I I take a lot of pride in that.
Right. Uh, sir, yeah.
Uh, my name is Mike, I live at one twenty-two Maple Street. There is a lot of traffic going back and forth between the schools, people riding their bicycles. Uh, jogging, walking their dogs. And it's, uh, we do need a sidewalk that's down the road. My biggest concern is about the septic. Um, you're talking about three houses gonna share one tank. I don't know how that's really possible or feasible. But it's a big concern, this. And stuff like that, runoff from the houses. Personally, I think that. That's too small a lot for three house. It's just my opinion. It's that's about it. But the street is really unsafe. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other additional, yeah, sir?
Yeah, Alan, ninth twenty-four Lancaster. Um, we've moved to a new history. I started dating Marie and lived on Omar after sixty years. So I'm very familiar with Maple, I have that building and all of the things that friends have been. Um, it's time to do something right there. Second newer history, I've worked with a fellow, Kevin Giblin. Was a Knopf resident, prideful. And we built Brody Way, and and. I said to Kevin, why, why we doing this? He said, because Knopf is unaffordable. They're putting something in that people, hopefully Knopf people, benefit from, else. In the future, it's not gonna be that, this is a chance to get something that Knopf people can afford to live, it's a good town, people benefit from it. Um, thirdly, I make a point that Kevin Giblin took pride in what he did, we built good things. I know Dave, he's done some work for me, it's a construct, he will be something to build something, Alan is satisfied. It'll be something that, uh, that is not very, very issues, the rules about septic now are so strong. That, uh, the town would be certain that it works efficiently and help.
Thank you. Um, are there any other public comments? At this time?
I have one.
Well, sorry.
Are these?
Sorry, you, sorry.
Shannon Howard, nine Johnson F. Are these houses two stories and an attic? Two full stories, yeah. But my house is one and a half.
Yeah, that's.
This needs a bigger than most, I'm around, mine's only about fourteen hundred. These are big, you think that would do that?
It's both the plans.
Seventeen is two thousand. I was just wondering, and do they have basements?
They do have basements, yep.
So I think the, that the two proposed units for two bedrooms contain twenty-one.
Twenty-one seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, finished areas.
Yeah, so you can see that's the second, that's the second floor right there.
Saying, the area is mostly common like one and a half.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking to operate the neighborhood and and, uh, increase the value of your guys' houses. Which was that, that's exactly what it will do. If you live in a neighborhood and and somebody builds a newer house and it's, you know, it's a little bit bigger than the one you do, like this lady was saying back here. All it does is add value to your house.
But to answer your question, it's, these are two-story homes, um, there's a peak, but there's no off topic of a second story, right?
No, so.
They have, each have driveways, but they don't have like a parking lot where we do.
This is standard driveway, just.
Straight driveway, double carway, right into the garage.
Um. Are you all set, man?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, are there any other? Public comments? Okay. Um. Any additional questions from the board, I mean, I think. Okay, yeah. You talked about it earlier as far as kind of having light bulbs on the site and the like. Who's responsible for the maintenance? So why would it go out?
So that'll be me, it'll be under, under the homeowner.
And then, so who's responsible for landscaping and cutting the lawn?
Landscaping will be, you know, myself, still flowering, and it'll and it'll be like just a regular, you know, rental unit. So we'll upkeep the house, we'll maintain it, we'll pay to, you know, pump the septic system, they'll have their own. You know, generally, and most families use to have, you know, like landlord meters for electrical, there won't be that, cause they're single family homes.
Sure.
So they'll be responsible for their own, you know, electricity and and stuff like that.
But the lawn care, the.
Yeah, the lawn care, yeah, since it's under common ownership, we'll be, you know, supplying that.
And is that any different today? Looking at the lot, the landscaping is kind of gone.
Yeah.
Uh, kind of wild.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, I think the previous owner had had, you know, they they were trying the landscaping that I would imagine.
Yeah, so just curious, is. The neighborhood said I swear, I think.
Oh, it's an absolute disaster.
So why, why hasn't it been maintained today? Like, why hasn't the grass been cut? Why hasn't the land been cared for, I just.
The property is unusable, and we've been trying for several years to be able to use it, and it's. Right now, there's nothing but tearing costs with no upside, and so we can't, we can't tear down the structure. Because we would risk. Giving up existing lights. And it's essentially, we. We've been prevented from doing anything with the property as soon as we have an approved plan. They just gonna clean up the property, demolish the existing building, it's gonna look a hundred times better.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt that, I just, um, I I just love the fact that it's been, it hasn't been cared for from a landscaping perspective for years. And considering the ma- marginal cost actually low on. I think you got the resources, you know, like, but it just would be nice to see it be more well kept. As a commitment to the neighborhood and commitment to the town, it's like.
We're the first board member that's asked that, so that shows you, uh, definitely care about it. So, you know, it goes a long way and. Like I said before, the the most upsetting thing of tonight is for Paul to, you know, come out and say that they don't think they can make a decision. Cause I've talked to numerous one of these neighbors. And every single person that I talked to didn't have a single bad thing to say about this project. And every single person that I talked to didn't have a single bad thing to say about this project. They thought it was great, obviously they didn't zoom in to complain about it. I've applied for my demo permit with Bob. The worst part about it is we have to wait thirty more days to make decisions. Cause I'll tell you right now, the day that Bob signs off on that demo permit, that place is coming down. It's a disgrace to the town.
Mm-hmm.
It's a disgrace to the neighborhood. These folks over here are older in town, they have to look at it every day.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, it's an embarrassment. I own, myself and my family own twenty properties in North Row. We're, we're one of the largest landowners as well. This property is an absolute disgrace. And if we approved it tonight, instead of waiting another month, that's thirty days that we can rip this building down and tear it down. And clean up the landscape and get the neighborhood going. But unfortunately, right now, it seems like we're gonna wait another thirty days to get that accomplished. And that's just affecting these folks, it's not affecting us because we don't look at it, I don't, I buy that. Like, yeah, I don't know where everyone lives, but that's affecting these folks back here.
That's on, I answer that's the street.
Yeah.
Can I ask? Yes, for doubt.
Uh, plan for demolition is.
Sorry, stay calm. Can you just say, you're just, you're naming your addresses for the minutes?
Um, the plan is the demolition is, all the permits have been submitted. Um, I know you had some concerns before, I think it's your, your son or daughter that um, has some health conditions. I'm more than happy to sit down with you at any point and go over whatever you need to accommodate. Um, you guys, obviously you guys are one of the closest residents, um, but the asbestos has been removed. Um, you know, obviously it's ready to demo and like I said, the most unfortunate part about tonight is that we're gonna probably wait another thirty days. So, um, that's unfortunate, it is what it is, we've waited three or four years at this point, but I'm ready, I'm ready to rip the building down. So I, I feel bad for the neighbors, I feel bad for the people that are looking at it, um, like I said, I, I, I don't, I don't drive by there, um, I don't take pride in it. You know, I can give you a list of every property I own in North Row. And every single one of them is is landscape, looks professional, it's kept clean, I take a lot of pride in the properties I own, not.
Grass and bushes, I am about to change the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, well, I can give you my card with my personal number on it, I'm happy to go over that with you and. I know your, your son or daughter has some healthy conditions and if we're gonna do some stuff, if, you know, we have to work around a plan on. Um, you know, doing certain stuff in the morning and the afternoon or Bob had, you know, said maybe get a water truck. Whatever, whatever combinations, obviously there's a significant issue there, but we're, I'm more than happy to work with you. I'm a pretty hands-on person, I'll, I'll, I'll be there the entire job.
I guess what I would just say, Dave, to your kind of response about us not making the final decision tonight, but. You know, in, in order to produce the decision, right, we actually posed a public hearing tonight. We voted on it, we have fourteen days to file it with the town. Um, decisions are not easily written um, by town staff. Um, there, as I said to start, there's a lot of moving parts, there's waiver requests, there's. Things that we need to notate to make sure that the town is protected. And board is protected. Um, and neighbors are protected and so we have a decision that is just for the applicant. And the town, and I understand you're motivated, which is why we, you know, sort of as a board. Right, agreed to the remand decision to be here tonight. The motivations are on both sides, okay, okay.
Where is litigation? We were just in litigation, we want to make sure that everybody is protected between you, us. The residents, everybody.
Yeah, so look, I mean. We're not re-litigating as of what has happened previously, you know, I think as the board, we discussed this. With the remand decision, you know, we're looking to move forward, you know, we're hoping to give you sort of. Uh, some direction on what our feeling is today, um, so that you can, you know, proceed on, um. So. Anyway, um, I guess, are there any other additional public comments at this time? Okay, um, so I guess for the board, any other additional questions? So I guess I'll go first, right? So in terms of the special permit, right, in terms of the three decisions that are in front of us today, and I guess we'll give you sort of straw both that works. Um, so in terms of the special permits, um, for the three single family homes. Altering a, a pre-existing non-conforming lot. You know, and again, sort of repeating myself, but uh, I do think that this is a better plan. Um, three single family homes as opposed to one large townhouse that sort of was brownstone. Uh, in terms of the size of the houses versus the size of the lots in the neighborhood. Um, if you look at the, the houses that exist and the properties that exist in and around Omaha, Johnson, Maple, right? Talking about properties with a average size of between an quarter to a third of an acre. This property is one point two acres, so I have three houses on one point two acres. My opinion makes sense, much more sense than the previous project. Uh, I think that having three different driveways, egress on three different streets. Omaha, Johnson and Maple, I think is an improvement. Um, never gonna prevent the number of people living in a house, but I think that you can diffuse some of the traffic. Having them enter and exit three different roads. Um, so I do think overall, having three single family homes on this property is a good path forward. Um, and a signal in the right direction. So that's my opinion on the special permit aspect of it. With regards to the site plan, uh, I do share the concerns that people have addressed here with regards to traffic. Maple Street is a very busy road that has kids walking down it. Um, it has trucks on it sometimes. Um, but there are a lot of kids going to and from the high school, they cut down Maple if they're coming from. Say the central, western part of North Row to get to Algonquin. Newsflash, teenage kids don't usually follow the speed limit, so it is quite a busy road, um. Now, how does that affect this property? So I do think that it would be helpful if the property was made more level with the road, so currently there's. A little bit of a, say a six to eight foot hill at the corner of, I think it's Omaha and Maple. Um, it would be helpful that some of the landscaping allows for better sightlines. For, for the roads so that people are walking down Maple. Um, it's helpful, but those are my initial comments. I hope anyone else supports.
I just echo the same comments, sorry. Yeah, I just echo the same comments, I think the design looks pretty nice as far as fitting in with the overall surrounding uh, houses. Um, and it was, yeah, I don't know if you have the documentation of saying, cause you had mentioned you worked with the neighbors, I think that's kind of. Vital to the overall success, not only of the project, but just of whole neighborhood.
If you listen to our last meeting, one of the uh, next door neighbors actually logged on the meeting. And said that this design in the middle of the meeting, I mean, she came in and she said, you know, it would be nicer to build three single family homes there. And I said, well, that's something I'll look into, so I talked to her, I talked to the next door neighbor and I said, you know, what do you guys think? And that's how we came up with this plan, you know, we base it upon, you know, what we thought was best for the neighborhood. What, you know, I thought was a, was a good, you know, financial decision for myself and my family and came up with the best plan.
Uh, Suzie?
Um, I'm gonna echo some of what some of the neighbors had said with this design, this gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but. As you said, there's a lot of, like, um, there's a lot of people in young families that are moving in and can't afford, and this would be agreed concept for those people. Um, and I like the driveway setup. Um, if you did those changes along Maple, I think that would be great, um, because it is a very busy, we had a couple cases where I did. Kind of study that area and the traffic studies in that area, it's kind of busy. Um, the team of drivers are not known as being the best drivers. Um, I am concerned with the takedown, we did receive a letter tonight. Um, from a neighbor about the, the um, tearing down the structure. So it made me very happy to hear you say that you will offer sit down with Mrs. Slifer. Um, please do so.
Yeah, I got, I got my personal cell phone in my car in my pocket before she's gonna get it.
Um, and your concerns too, with the stuff going around, um. Um, so those, and I'm sure I, I do not know a lot about septic, I always. Refer to you and to Bob about septic question, so I'm sure the five bedroom septic will be up to. Up to science, I trust science, septic science on that. Um, science, septic science, yeah, I don't know anything about septic systems really, but um, when I learn here. So those are my comments on that.
So, so I guess just about real quick on the septic, you like, the five bedroom septic plan has been approved?
I don't know if it has been approved, but there's currently a five bedroom system on property.
Right.
And to replace it, um, whatever system that goes in. Uh, is engineered, stamped and signed off and approved by the uh, the health department.
Right.
And I don't issue a permit for any of the buildings, unless they're satisfied with the design and installers for just. And they don't get an occupancy permit until I get a sign off with the final inspections for the septic system.
So to summarize, there's gonna be a new five bedroom septic system, it's gonna go in front of border health. Um, there will be a number of checks and balances, we will not approve or allow anything to continue unless. Everything has been set up, it's all on the state coast.
Got it, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is a good project, I think the homes are in substantial harmony uh, with the neighborhood. Um, I really, what with the, the traffic was a concern uh, previously, so I like the fact that we're leveraging uh, the two side roads, Omaha and Johnson. Um, so I think this is uh, I'm prepared this project.
Roger.
Yeah, I just wanna say, I'm fairly new to town, only about fourteen years, so. I don't have the history of the street, but this was a five unit structure that had been. Added on over many years, so that's where we come to the five bedroom portion of this. And that's why what was previously there, so they can come back, or they can just build a five unit right on Maple. And keep two entrances on Maple. Which doesn't help the homeowners, it doesn't help the traffic, it doesn't help the town. So they've come to us and, you know, basically said, what can we do to help make this better? So they've been working to get a, some sort of a project that. Mitigates some of the problems that were with the old. Building that was on front, so I like the fact that, you know, we've taken. More than two thirds of the trips off of the street. Uh, basically off of Maple and put on Johnson, Omaha, um, it's gonna share a large open area in the back. Uh, the five city and septic, this will be an improvement, as I said, it will be, you know. Engineered to twenty twenty five standards, uh, so I like the direction this has gone.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I know you're helping, but.
No, I uh, I agree mostly with what I've been saying, I. Basically comes down to, I think that this project as proposed will be substantially less detrimental as we're staring at. Uh, and then you're a lot of support uh, behind Dave and. Uh, I believe that this would be for, for the career gain of the union.
Um. Are there any other final comments, I guess, before we uh, continue this meeting? Uh, from town staff at all, I think we have a, a list of ticket items to sort of go through, um. I guess, as regards to the applicant, is there any other additional questions, I mean, I think as sort of the notes, in terms of. The punch list of items, um, I think Lori can reach out to you guys in terms of.
Uh, I think, um, if it's okay with the board, my suggestion would be. We have a couple tweaks to the plans to add some details and, and um, address a couple issues. Uh, on our end. And we'll certainly make sure we had revised plans showing all of that in. Um, to the extent necessary, we can submit written waiver requests on a couple of things, in back statement and stuff like that. And then I, I would ask if, if it's okay for, um. Town council and I to work together, if Lori needs to have a draft decision prepared that. Hopefully the board could review and vote on at the next meeting, so we're not then waiting. You know, so much additional time, obviously, to unwind, you can make any corrections, but just. Trying to think of how we can get the project started, you've just been building down. While the weather holds, um.
Generally, the way, the way our board is operated, you need to come into a meeting typically with a draft in here. When you have a case as complicated as this, with a lot of moving parts, we did not have a draft in here, because we didn't know. All the labor requests, like I said, they need to go down all the labor requests, so just to make sure all inter documented. And of course, we have fourteen days to do, which I think puts a lot of stress on town staff. Um, that's something that typically is generally to avoid that. So, um, I, my, my hope is that, to your point, by next meeting, we have all the documentation that we need. Um, we have all, any of the documents. Things that are missing could be conditions for approval, and that they're really just small punch list items. Um, and that we can move forward at our next. Right? Uh, I guess if this, if there's any other, sort of no other additional public comments, if we're additional, one additional comments. Um, I guess when's our next meeting? September twenty third. So I guess I'll initiate a motion to continue public hearing. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue public hearing, uh, one twenty nine Gate Street to the next CBA meeting Tuesday, September twenty third.
Second.
Seven P M.
Second.
Uh, so there's a motion to continue meetings, it's turned twenty third, seven P M, most favor? Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, but um, people ended up like too much of it, a little fall holiday, starting off soon. It's us, North Row, uh, you know, like.
Okay, that's my cell phone number, you're in the nation, you're speaking.
Yeah.
First hand, guess I bet, yeah.
But also we did. It's very funny. With that, with that, we just.
Yeah, I was scared, so I'll give it a couple of minutes.
Yeah. I think it was expected.
Second meeting, twenty twenty five, uh, as submitted.
Okay, let's say, the whole Sunday, the, I'm, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
To the chair, um, I'm not sure how much the audio got back, it seemed like just one.
Oh, okay, so we just, um, Brad made a motion, seconded by uh, Suzie, uh, to. And this is being announced until by twenty second, twenty. Uh, so our next, next meeting is September twenty third. Um, at seven P M, we will open that, you want a piece for.
Right. Um, I'm still, uh, need to read out, uh, we couldn't find from the driver too, uh, somebody called. We will, we received a filing today, so we have at least one additional year.
One additional. Okay.
That's a dimensional difference.
Um.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. Anything else, have anything?
I don't have any.
Nothing?
I'm getting it, it's October, you're going to next meeting.
When you have a, like, uh, two cases like this, this is a major one continuing, do you take the smaller one first? And go into this one, do you, do you continue this meeting first?
To you, I mean, I could put them both at seven o'clock and then you can decide which one is on uh, to have it first, um.
I'm just wondering, you know, somebody comes in and then look for the bench, this may take, yeah, some significant more time.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll see.
I'm just asking how the board.
Yeah, I think typically we, we've always just thought, continue mission first. Um, and then take the full joint. Yeah, but we could see, um. You know, I mean, I think it really depends on, um. What the mission is, yeah, I mean, to this one. What you mentioned there, it's, yeah, I mean, to this weight, this coming in for a sign. Just, we just do that.
All right, one thing that I wanted to, thank you guys.
We haven't read anything on that, by the way.
Um, so we're gonna have a public hearing on rezoning, uh, for White Cliffs mansion. And it's gonna be scheduled for September sixteen. So I can send you the public hearing notice as well as a proposed article and that. Uh, so the proposal is to expand the Business East zoning, so. The front part of White Cliffs is within, uh, Business East, but the building itself is within residential C. Which pretty much only allows single-family developments, and the proposal. Uh, that is going before town meeting is for an event venue. Um, so the Business East zoning will allow that use to go forward. We discussed, Bob and I discussed, uh, which. Use would be most appropriate for their event venue, and, uh, we agreed that restaurants with alcohol would be the most. At use, so.
At what time?
I think it's gonna be right at six o'clock.
So it's planned to. You said to rezone that to a special purpose?
So it would be to rezone it to Business East. So it would be. So it would be a permit that would be approved by the CBA. So you, you folks would, um, oversee, uh, that project.
Yep.
Um, but it would be to change the residential C zoning for the balance of the parcel to Business East. So the entirety would be Business East.
In person, or Zoom?
Zoom.
Oh, the, the zoning.
Yeah, the planning board still is meeting explicitly by seven.
You know, that's at six?
Six o'clock on that sixty.
Anyway. Um, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Alright, so I made a motion to adjourn, Suzie seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.